I haven't seen that, Mark. We don't have the applicant for number eight yet. I haven't seen that.
He has not arrived yet.
Thank you for asking, Ed. Agenda item number ten, discussion in public hearing on approval of the Town of Farragut mixed-use town center vision plan. Town of Farragut applicant.
Yeah, this item was discussed last month. I went through each chapter in the draft that the consultant put together. And basically, we talked about how we got to this point. This has been going on for about a year. One of the things that has been a big focus of this whole process was the public engagement. That was one of the chapters, actually, in this plan. We, just to give you an overview of the public engagement that we had, we had four open house workshops. The first one was August thirty-first. We had two of those, one hundred and thirty-six participants. Then we had, it was August of, obviously, last year, April ninth, we had two workshops. We had seventy participants. Then we also had two surveys that were sent out. The first was early on when the applicant, the consultant, put together a draft plan. That was sent out in September. We had over two hundred responses to that. And then when they had the final plan, before we had the public workshops, we put together a survey that was up basically the whole month of March, and we had over twelve hundred responses to that survey. We've had two public steering committee meetings. We had a stakeholder meeting with five different stakeholder groups representing different aspects of the community, homeowners, developers, you know, business representatives and so forth. We've had this presented at two staff developer meetings, which are public meetings. We, of course, talked about the whole plan last month and went through that in detail. And now it's here before you for a recommendation through resolution PC dash twenty-four dash oh eight. Based on the feedback that we received from the draft plan, most of the comments were clerical in nature. We had a few of those things, just typos or errors that were clerical, again, in nature. The two things that we did, that did come up in last month's discussion that we did make some changes to, the first was dealing with the Concord Road corridor. Originally, townhomes were shown all the way down to Pleasant Forest Cemetery. You've got to keep in mind that this property is currently zoned office. That's across from Thornton Heights. So, the plan has residential, townhome residential that would be across from existing residential. So, the plan is actually less, you know, intense, I guess, than the current zoning potentially could be. So, you've got residential across from residential. So, they did lessen the amount of townhomes along that corridor. And we did add a civic institutional space for the cemetery to grow into in the future. Of course, this area in green is all the Turkey Creek floodplain. And that's mostly very difficult or undevelopable, a lot of it. So, those were the main changes there. We also showed the, any potential access points, although this is much in more detail than really this vision plan is designed for. Would line up with existing streets in Thornton Heights. There wouldn't be any other curb cuts along Concord Road. That was another thing that was mentioned. And then another comment that we received, quite a few comments from the citizens on and some board members, were the raised medians that were shown in Kingston Pike. Those have been taken out of this plan. The, of course, some future planning commissioner board could certainly revisit that, but they have been taken out of this plan because there were just too many concerns that people had with stacking and visibility and other things like that. So, frankly, throughout this whole process, we, like I said, we received hundreds and hundreds of comments, and we've tried to take those into consideration. Another good example of where we did that was Bridgewater subdivision, which I know they've had some people sign up to speak. We did listen to what their concerns was. I don't have a, let me see if I can pull this up a little bit. But originally, the streets were shown to connect into Bridgewater. There was a conceptual street that was connecting into a street that stubs to the Biddle Farm. It was really designed to be connected to. The plan's been changed to not show that. It just basically generically says that there should be a connection somewhere to the south that ends up in Red Mill. And that doesn't necessarily have to go through Bridgewater. And so, what the plan now shows is a walking trail that stubs into the end of that street into the Bridgewater subdivision. So, that was another example of where we took the public input. The plan that's presented reflects the predominant public input that we received. And we did make some adjustments to those areas that were of concern, like the Bridgewater. We also, originally, there was a connection into Glen Abbey. They took that out. There was a little bit more intense development in the existing commercial zone portion of the Ford tract. That's been changed to an event center boutique hotel for this particular space. Another thing that I need to be clear about, and we could add this as language to the ordinance if we needed to, as far as the adoption language, but this is a vision plan. This is not requirements. Everything in this plan does not have to happen. And it certainly doesn't have to happen the way it's shown. It's a, it's a vision document that is used to guide potential decisions for development and redevelopment, just like our architectural design guidelines that were adopted by ordinance in 2015. There's things in there that were shown on Outlet Drive and Campbell Station Inn property in the plan that didn't occur. And in fact, it's very different from what's in the plan. But we don't amend plans every time something, some graphic isn't realized. That's not the purpose of a vision plan. A vision plan is just that. It's a vision. It's broad concepts that decision makers can rely on to make decisions on more detailed requirements, whether it's ordinance amendments, budget, capital investment programs. So, just want to be clear about that because I know there's been some comments out there about, you know, that everything in this plan basically is prescriptive, and that's what needs to happen. That's inaccurate. That's not the case. So, anyway, that's kind of an overview of how we got to this point. Again, only two major areas have changed. The rest of them were clerical in nature. If anybody has any questions or comments of me, I'll be happy to try to answer those. I do have some people that have signed up to speak on this.
All right. Thank you, Mark. And thank you. I don't think you can emphasize enough that this is just a vision plan. This isn't a zoning. This isn't something that's in concrete that's going to happen tomorrow, next year, or five years from now. It's a vision plan, and that is all that this is. This vision plan was derived from input from the citizens of the Town of Farragut. Thank you. So, before we move on and open it up for discussion and questions, we will need a motion and a second on the floor?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
With that said, Mark, you said we have, how many, how many people do we have signed up to speak on this item?
Sure. I think I have five.
Five. Okay. So, if you would, when Mark calls your name, please step to the podium and address the commission, and please give your name and your address, please.
I will note that if this clock doesn't work, because I have trouble with this thing. You have five minutes.
We're on a five-minute clock.
I will keep you on the Sonto, which never fails me. And the first speaker is Mike Mitchell. And after Mike, we have Alderman David White.
Mr. Mitchell, if you would, please make your way to the podium.
Thank you. My name's Mike Mitchell. I live on Bricksworth Boulevard. Mayor, commissioners, Mark, thank you for your time. So, I believe that other people will speak about the parking garage. I won't dwell on that. I believe that Alderman Burnett's going to ask you to remove it. So, on May sixteenth, I ask you to remove the tree-filled medians. So, I come again to ask you that. I believe that that's a public safety issue. I certainly don't want that on Concord Road, specifically on Concord Road. And I, we already have it on Jamestown Boulevard. So, can we just say, mission accomplished? And I ask you to remove it on Campbell Station Road because of its proximity to Rural Metro, which is a first responder. I ask you to, there is a formula, which I spoke to you on May sixteenth about. It is a ratio of turning radius. And my concern, and the reason I want you to remove it, is we've had a long discussion about reducing the traffic lane widths on Campbell Station Road and Kingston Pike. I believe that it's a public safety hazard that is used by Rural Metro, our first responder. A friend of mine is an emergency doctor. He works in the ER. Asked me not to mention his name for legal reasons. But when I told him about this idea of reducing the lane width, he was adamant that that would just make his life very difficult. The great concern is gridlock. Gridlock robs him of time. I'm asking you to remove that. And last, and since Tom Hale is not with us, I have to ask you, on the agenda, this is not a plan. It is ordinance two-four dash one-three. I would ask for a motion and a second to make it a plan, and then a deliberation and a vote. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell.
The next speaker is Alderman David White. And after David, we have Alex Kane. Okay. We have Alex Kane, and then Angie Hodge after Alex.
Hello, Alex.
Good evening. And for disclosure, I am a candidate for North Ward Alderman. I live at five-twenty-four Wyndham Hall Lane. I want to say thank you for all of you who put time into this plan. It is very extensive. And I know it was a significant undertaking involving multiple stakeholders with different priorities and a wide range of opinions. I know the town faced major challenges while putting together this plan and presented it to our community with a, a very robust plan. Let us agree, no plan is perfect. I believe the work you're done, that you have done, will serve our community for many years to come. It's important to acknowledge that not everything in a plan, or especially this plan, will come to reality. Times and circumstances change, just like Mr. Shipley said earlier. Future leaders need the opportunity to bring their knowledge, experience, and talents to this continuing project. Over the last week, there's been considerable confusion about the nature of this document on social media. Is it a vision plan, or is it going to become a town ordinance? Is it binding or merely advisory? For the average citizen, the term ordinance implies something that we must follow. According to the Town of Farragut website, this is a vision document, not something designed to set requirements like our town ordinances do. We should, we should always avoid creating this type of confusion for our residents. The vision plan outlines our aspirations, while ordinances are mandatory with potential penalties for noncompliance. How do we proceed with a vision plan that is included amongst our laws and regulations? I support the vision plan, but I believe it should remain a plan and never become an ordinance. Moving forward, we should not treat, treat it like one of, excuse me, we should treat it just like our comprehensive land use plan and other town guiding documents. I urge you not to include the vision plan in any of our town ordinances. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kane.
The next speaker is Angie Hodge. And after Angie is Mike Alley.
Angie Hodge, one-one-one-zero-four Nautical Drive. I live in Bridgewater, and Mark, you've answered my questions. I just want to say that I'm grateful to you guys for your service and your time. Mark has listened to me tirelessly. Your Aldermans have listened to me tirelessly. Louise Pavling gave me an hour and a half of her time, and I'm grateful. I just want to say thank you all for listening to us. We truly would love to see that road not, you know, break through our neighborhood, and we're so grateful that y'all listen to us. One other word, I want to say, your Public Works has done a great job fixing our sidewalks and helping us keep our beautiful neighborhood up. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Angie. Appreciate you coming out tonight.
Mike Alley, five-eleven Windless Road, which is, again, in Bridgewater. Kind of come down here looking for, you know, hornet's nest, but I think we've come to an agreement that maybe you're not going to do that road. Those, about a hundred and fifty houses in there is going to be split in half. So, anyway, again, I want to thank you guys. I don't know if we need to keep coming. Vision, I don't, it kind of goes with what this gentleman was saying. It's a little confusing. Hey, they're having a meeting. The doors are open. Go down there. I don't know when it's going to be dead. Do we, do we need to keep coming? Is, I don't know what.
I'll answer that. I mean, again, like, we emphasize, it is a vision plan.
Rightly.
And we've pulled that language out, that if it's approved tonight, we'll go to the Board of Mayor and Aldermen, we'll have that language in it to remove that in the vision plan itself. So, that there will only be a pedestrian connectivity rather than vehicular connectivity.
Okay. Well, and again, appreciate you guys. Just following what Angie said. Appreciate y'all's time. Thank you.
Mr. Alley, thank you for coming by this evening.
I mean, I would say, keep in mind, you never know what a future planning commissioner board could do. Never say never.
Absolutely.
Always have to watch for that. But it has been changed in the plan. So.
All right. Well, with that.
The next, I've got two more speakers. The next one is Randall Roberts, and then Michael Wilson is the last speaker.
Randall Roberts, one-one-nine-five Buttered Lane, Sugarwood. Thank you all for your time. Hate to beat a dead horse, but a lot of my stuff, the same concerns that Alex has expressed. Just for transparency, I'm running for Alderman South Ward Two. As a potential future Alderman, I'm concerned making this plan into an ordinance will negatively impact future discussions, both at the FMPC level and at the mayor of board and Alderman level. It seems an ordinance infers that the items in the plan should be done versus a vision of what we want to see in the town center area. These development decisions should be made at the time the property is brought before this commission and the Board of Mayor and Aldermen for consideration. This document should only serve as a guide for those discussions. No future commissioner or Alderman should feel compelled to support something in this plan because it is part of an ordinance. Town officials need to be able to evaluate the vision in light of the circumstances of the time it's brought before them without feeling pressured to give this document more weight than that of other plans, such as the comprehensive land use plan. A simple example are the medians in the middle of the roads, Rottenella. It might seem like a good idea to some, while others have expressed real concerns. As I've always said, everything looks good on paper. This particular is true, this is particularly true concerning the Concord Road medians showing the plan. Traffic realities in seven to six years might mean we need to further expand that road to accommodate additional traffic. And who really knows what the future is going to bring until it gets there. Few expected the traffic problems that we're now beginning to experience. I don't understand why anyone would consider including this plan in the appendices of the town ordinance in the same manner as zoning ordinances, subdivision regulations, and architectural design studies. It doesn't belong there. It would simply be a plan that provides guidance to future town officials, giving them the same flexibility and freedom to make the decisions as all of you have. Treat this as the same as the comprehensive land use plan has been treated for years. And this treatment will serve you all well and continue to serve your successors just as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts.
Good evening. Michael Wilson, four-one-two Eisenhower Street, Farragut, Tennessee. M-TAS states in municipal code, is quote, "Provides the governing body, the city's administration, and the citizens one basic source for discerning the current laws and regulations governing the city," unquote. Based on that definition, it seems our code of ordinances should contain, should continue to include only our laws and regulations that are, that we are required to follow. Yesterday, Vice Mayor Pavling posted the following comments on social media regarding this plan. Quote, "Regarding the mixed-use town center vision plan, it is just that, a vision plan," unquote. Further, she stated, quote, "It's a guide to explore possibilities for development and redevelopment of property in the town center based on community input and feedback," unquote. Finally, she said, quote, "Nothing in this plan is mandatory. Nothing in this plan is required," unquote. And we've heard that, again, expressed by several of you here. Couldn't her comments also describe the comprehensive land use plan, the pedestrian and bicycle plan, et cetera? These are all plans that guide your conversations, decisions, discussions, et cetera. Understanding that this is a vision plan, ask yourself, why is this plan, unlike those others, being put in the town ordinance? Why does resolution PC twenty-four zero-eight recommend approval to add this vision plan as appendix G to the Town of Farragut Code of Ordinances? Over the last few days, there's been a lot said about this plan and some of its contents, namely the potential parking garage found on page sixty-nine and ninety-one. It's easy to see that this type of confusion will result from making this plan into an ordinance. As we all know, plans are guiding documents. Ordinances, ordinances provide requirements to be followed. Will residents, developers, and others view this document and be confused? For example, a developer might question, can I build office space on the ten acres currently zoned, oh-one on the Ford property? Or does this now need to be a mix of commercial, residential, and green space, as listed on page sixty-three of this ordinance? If approved, how will this change impact your conversations and decisions as a planning commission? In that Ford property situation, do you follow the oh-one zoning, the oh-one zoning ordinance found in appendix H, or the vision, the vision plan ordinance found in appendix G? I have advocated for this public outreach in the town center since the fall of 2020, and I support this plan. I support it and the recommendations. I don't even really have a problem with the parking garage if we need it five to ten years down the road. Quite honestly, I really don't have a problem with most of the trees in the middle of the road. I think it looks nice, but that's my opinion. I agree with the, with the vice mayor's comments. This is a vision plan, and it's a pretty good one. What it's not is a law or regulation. The plan should be treated the same as all, as this other similar plans I mentioned. As the vice mayor confirmed, it's a plan. It's a guide. And nothing in this plan is mandatory or required. That, ladies and gentlemen, is not an ordinance, and thus it should not be in the town's Code of Ordinances. I ask that you, you vote no on this resolution, and recommend that this plan be added to the list of town plans instead. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Alderman White?
Just briefly, I want to echo what the last speaker said. I think in the brief time I've been here, everybody knows I'm, I'm really seriously interested in ordinances and the laws. And the charter actually states, when we were formed, that we are a town of ordinances. Ordinances should not be made of future plans, of hopes and dreams we want to do someday. Why would you make that an ordinance? I hope you will all listen to the last speaker and hear what I say, and make this a vision plan for the future, for future boards like you, future Aldermen like me, can make a decision, put it before the people, and let them decide. Let's not try to make things like this a law that eventually somebody will want you to follow. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White. I'll open it up to the commissioners. Do a roll call. Commissioner Pinchak, do you have any comments you'd like to add? Pass. Commissioner Green?
No comment.
No comment. Vice Chairman St. Clair?
I have several comments on the Concord Road vision. One, I, I don't want to telegraph, I think this, the vision plan is exactly that. And it telegraphs the intent of our town and our citizens on what we see looking out in the future. Not that it can't be altered as, as, you know, circumstances arise, situations arise. But I think that there's a definite tree line down the, kind of diagonal down the middle of that piece of property, that strip, all the way from Anchor Green Drive and the red light, all the way down to the current Pleasant Forest Cemetery. And I would like to see the Pleasant Forest Cemetery, what we're calling the civic institution, shown going all the way up to that tree line and the floodplain to the west, and anything having to do with the townhouses, basically starting at Hewland Drive to the north. And I would not want to see any more curb cuts at all on Concord Road. Because you could easily come in for the access on the backside down from Anchor Green Drive and come down that backside, pass that commercial, and jog down to the townhouses and that. Also, I don't like to see, the idea of expanding Concord Road is probably not very realistic. There can be some lighting to it, probably. But the idea of putting a tree line median down the middle of that is, is pretty ridiculous in my, any kind of vision that I would see for that strip of road, as short as it is. And so, I think that needs to be, and I'm not sure how much input was, was given by specific residents of Thornton Heights and, or Concord Hills, where I live. I'll be grateful, everybody. But, and then I worry also about the fact that we have townhouses, even in that strip, what kind of effect will we have of trying to create almost a canyon down, down that corridor, depending on how close those townhouses are to Concord Road itself. So, I have a few comments about trying to tune this concept down Concord Road. The rest of the, I mean, we definitely need a vision plan. And I too, you know, with years that I've been on the planning commission and seeing lots of plans and lots of ordinances, I'm a little bit puzzled. I was hoping that Tom would be here tonight. Why is this an ordinance versus a plan? I'd like to, I'd like to know the question or the rationale about it. I'm open to, I just want to understand it. I don't, I'm not saying it shouldn't be or should be. I just want to understand.
What was that question, Ed, I?
About why, why an ordinance versus specifically a plan like other plans that we've had for the thirty-three years I've been on the planning commission. And I'm saying it's right or wrong. I just don't understand the rationale. So, that's my, I have specific comments on the Concord Road corridor, plus that overarching just question.
Yeah. Okay.
And I can show you a sketch of what I've got relative to that piece of property.
I would say the reason it's proposed as an ordinance in this case is similar to what, why it was with the architectural design guidelines. It gives the concepts that are in the plan more credibility if somebody's wanting to come in and do something, a developer or whoever has come to the town center area. They have a vision that the community has clearly embraced because they've adopted it as an ordinance. But it's still a vision plan. It just gives it a little more credibility, frankly, if it's adopted that way. But it's, ultimately, it's up to the Board of Mayor and Aldermen, frankly, as to how they want to adopt it, or if they want to adopt it. That's the reason it was presented as an ordinance.
I thought there was some, I thought there was some reason that had come up in the background.
It could be something that we, you could either clarify the ordinance language to make it clear that it's vision only and not requirements. That could be easily done in the introductory section of the ordinance. Or it could be adopted as a resolution, or it's whatever, you know, but I'm just telling you, that was the logic of it. We did exactly the same thing with the architectural design guidelines. Most of that that's in there are not requirements. There are some, but not all of it. And there's things that have happened in parts of the town that are shown in the architectural design guidelines that aren't reflective of what's in the guidelines. It's not what happened. But we didn't change the guidelines because of that, because they were seen as visual concepts for different parts of the town, like how Outlet Drive would develop. That was pre Topgolf.
Sure.
Had a completely different concept. So, again, I'm open to whatever you all are comfortable with. We can do this in various ways if you wanted just to.
Mark, what, what was the process for making the future land use map an official document?
The future land use map was adopted by ordinance only in the mixed-use town center area because the board felt like that was the top priority part of the town. So if somebody was going to vary the map, because the map is kind of like zoning map, it kind of gives you a vision of this general part of the town, this is kind of where the community sees this is going as far as future development. So in that case, if you change that larger concept of land use, then the map needs to be updated as well to be consistent with the community's input, just like we've done with the different priority areas where we've made changes to the map that reflected changes to the community's thoughts on those different parts of the town. So again, that's, but there's things in that plan that are shown as visual concepts that are not map-related that we haven't changed, but they're not things that have happened or came to fruition because it's just a plan.
Thank, thank you, Mark. The only comment I have is I just think, I understand the comments and I agree with the comments, but I just, somewhere it needs to be clear that this is not.
Yeah. Either if we're going to adopt it by ordinance, my thought is to make it really clear in the ordinance language, the adopting language, what it is and what its intent is, or don't adopt it by ordinance. Adopt it by resolution only. That's a possibility too. I, I told you the logic of why it was, it was an ordinance, and that's, that's why, because it gives it more credibility, more substance if somebody wants to do something in this part of the town. They know that the community has adopted it because they bought into it, they felt like it was a good plan, that they, that they bought into, and they reflected that in, in the ordinance.
And I, and I agree that we need to do something that makes it a meaningful document, people know it's a meaningful document, it doesn't get stuck on the back shelf somewhere, and nobody looks at it again, because there's a lot of resident input as well as a lot of professional input into coming up with a plan.
That's right, yeah.
But I also recognize the comments that are being made here, that we don't want to make people believe that somehow this is.
That's true, yeah, those are good comments, I agree, yeah.
And I don't know which, I don't know that making it a reference in the ordinance is a problem. I don't know which, which is better, actually, to do that. If the resolution accomplishes that without the harshness and the strictness of an ordinance, and perhaps a resolution is a better alternative.
That's my comment, yeah.
Okay, thank, thank you. Senator Green, Mayor, Mayor Williams. Mayor Williams.
I don't think we're in no great big hurry to do this. I mean, it's, we're not punching the clock on this, so I think we need to work on it some more. And I think that we should probably look at some different wording that would suit all the planning commissioners and to pass it on to the board with that particular wording.
As far as how we adopt it, is that what you're talking about? Okay. That's fine, it's up to you all, yeah.
Thank you. Commissioner Devlin.
I think it's been a good discussion. I, I think a lot of good points were made at the podium tonight, but let me explain why I, I actually like the idea of it being an ordinance, and let me tell you why. Is, for how many years now has this town had false starts, bombed out buildings, and had to abandon the future and the things that we wanted to do with the town center? I believe that people in this community can actually think through what a vision plan actually is and understand that the ordinance part of it is not some plot to mess with everybody later, but the ordinance is saying that we are committed to this, and this is something that we are going to do for this community in the future. Now, again, I get why there's pushback on, on doing it as an ordinance, and certainly willing to have the discussion not to do it that way. But I also completely understand why this community needs to get the message that we are committed to having this kind of future for this town. I think the community deserves it and can handle the information.
Thank you, Commissioner Devlin. Commissioner Presskin.
This may be an unpopular opinion, but I'm all for the medians on Concord Road if the road were, you know, at some point expanded, not necessarily to accommodate more traffic, but to accommodate medians, because that's in the parent responsibility zone, and I am for anything and everything that will slow traffic down on Concord Road. Because kids walk home from school, they walk to school, we don't need more traffic on Concord Road, we need less. If we slow traffic down, maybe they'll take Campbell Station instead, which is designed for that level of speed. So that's my opinion on that. As far as the ordinance versus resolution, if it's passed as an ordinance and somebody wants to change it, doesn't it have to go through us and BOMA?
Well, I mean, it would depend on what it is. If it's a major concept change, because again, I go back to the fact that this is a concept document. So if you're basically going to say, let's say on the Ford property, that we're going to, that we want, the community now wants a 200,000 square foot big box building there. Obviously, that's a major change to the concept that was in this vision plan, and the plan, in my opinion, in that regard, would have to be certainly updated and certainly changed. That would be a significant change that should frankly go to the planning commission and the board of mayor and alderman. Little, whether there's a parking garage or whether it's, where it's shown is not necessarily, it, it's a concept, an idea, that there might be a need for a cert, you know, parking garage at some point somewhere in the mixed-use town center area, depending on how it evolves over time. I mean, I can tell you that at $40,000 of space, town's not going to be building a parking garage anytime soon. I think I can speak for town in that regard. So again, it's just a concept, all these things that are in the plan, you know, there's general recommendations in the, the last two sections that have these general ideas, you know, more green space, more connectivity, concepts that drive decisions that are made on developing more detailed ordinance requirements, ordinance-related requirements, like amendments to the zoning ordinance or amendments to the subdivision regulations, things like that, that are inherently designed to be requirements, to be implementation tools. A vision plan by its nature is not that, never has been. Again, it does, if it, if, if the board is more comfortable not adopting it as an ordinance, then that's their prerogative. From a staff's perspective, I think it should be at least adopted as a resolution at a minimum, because again, I think we need to say, to show to people that may have an interest in doing something, or a future board in this part of the town, that we have, you know, we've kind of liked these concepts that are in this plan, and that's something that we really want to see happen in some fashion, in some manner, it may not be exactly the way it's shown in the plan, but the concept may be realized. And so I think that at a minimum, that would be, you know, the, the best case scenario if it's not adopted by ordinance. The other option would be to make it more clear in the ordinance adoption language, like the whereas section that the staff puts together, that it lays out exactly what this is and how it's to be applied, so that it's very clear to anybody of what this document is to be used for.
So it's really just about how serious someone takes it if they're coming into developed town?
Yeah, I mean, the only reason I proposed it as being an ordinance is because it adds a higher level of seriousness and credibility to the document itself, that the community has really bought into this. It doesn't mean that everything in here is going to happen and going to happen the way it's shown, but they have bought into the vision, the concepts, the general ideas that are being promoted in this overall plan.
Commissioner Meyer.
For the record, actually, I also like the medians on Concord Road, I happen to live on Concord Road. The, I think codifying the document is important to overcome some of the distrust that the town has in the development community, and I think that if we can promote transparency for somebody from the outside looking in, and they understand what our vision is, I think that's going to help them prepare a plan that's maybe a little closer to our vision versus something that is apples and oranges with our vision. I also think that we could put some language in there, and we've done it plenty of times. There's plenty of times where we use the, the word "may" instead of "shall," and I think that this plan is kind of like that. You're like, hey, this is what we're looking for, and, yeah, and typically, any kind of development that's going to be coming to the town of Farragut, they're, they're going to be looking for some concessions or variances, and this tells them that, hey, if you want the town to work with you, this is the, the plan that we would like to see, and you've got a lot better shot of trying to overcome some of the obstacles, i.e. obtaining variances, than, than if you come in with a plan that's completely different than this. So I think for, in the interest of transparency, for somebody being able to get into our municipal code and look at it and, and see it as an addendum and including some language in there that says, hey, this is a, a plan that's been developed with a lot of community outreach of what the community is looking for, I think that could potentially save the developer a lot of time and effort and money if their plan is, is nothing like this plan. And so with that being said, I, I don't think we're ready to adopt it or, or approve it tonight, really, the board of mayor and alderman would adopt it at their discretion. So what I'd like to do is withdraw my second, because otherwise, we have to vote on it with a, with a motion and a second, but if I could withdraw my second, and that way, it'll give the staff some time to wordsmith the, the introductory paragraph in the plan and maybe address some of the concerns that the community has about, you know, how rigid this plan is, and the, and the plan is not designed to be a super rigid plan, it is, it is designed to share with folks, hey, this is what we would like to see, let's work together and see if we can obtain these results or results similar to this. We got to get you on the, on the microphone.
One more, one more, please.
We're not there yet.
We're, we're, have it open to the commission at the moment, and I've got some comments I would like to make as well. Commissioner Green, you have it forward. Yeah, in listening to the discussion, another thought occurred to me. Four years from now, there may be a different board of mayor and alderman and a lot of different planning commissioners from all we know, and having this as a, a part of an ordinance, I think helps preserve it, protect it. I've heard, I haven't heard anybody saying bad about it, so I actually think that that helps preserve it, makes it harder for future government, this government in town, to ignore it, okay? So I think that's, that's a benefit, actually, of helping to keep it preserved. It's flexible, but it's there, and it's, can't be totally ignored because it's part of our, would be a part of our ordinance. So that's another thought to keep in mind. Thank you, Commissioner Green. I just want to say, you know, a lot, a lot of work's gone into this, there's a lot of public input. I agree with all the comments that we heard tonight. I agree with all of our commissioners. I don't think our views are varying, but I think Mayor Williams put it into good perspective, saying that we're not on the shot clock, and I think that we could revisit it, revisit the language, and, you know, how we approach it, whether it's an ordinance or a resolution. So with that said, I think Commissioner Meyer, you, if you would like to rescind your second at this time rather than vote, would we need a motion to defer action?
Well, I think your first thing would be that the, the motion would just die without a second.
Very good.
And then the second thing is then we'd probably need a motion to either table it or postpone it.
Okay.
Pending something that, you table it, kind of leaves it out there indefinitely. Postponing it means, hey, we're going to put it on the agenda in the near term, is, is kind of, I think General Roberts rules.
Okay, yeah, very, very good. So the motion on, the second on the floor has been rescinded, and with that said, do we have a motion to postpone approval of the town of Farragut mixed-use town center vision plan?
So moved. Second.
Moved with second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes. No's, no no's, let the record show that this item has been postponed. The vote of eight yes, zero no's. Thank you, everybody. I think it's, I'll allow it, Mr. Wilson, if you would. Motion has been approved.
Thank you, Commissioner, I appreciate that. I did want to say, if you look in our appendices to our, our code of ordinances, we did this for the mixed-use town center under the CLUP, under the land use plan. The whole document from the mixed-use town center is not imported into the ordinance, but there's a standalone document that says this is what the town wants from the mixed-use town center. I just wanted to propose to staff and to this commission, maybe that's an option, is that we put exactly what you all are talking about. We don't want this to die, we want this, this is critical to our town, and point it back to this is a plan that, that we want to hold to, and put that language of the criticality of this, the importance of this, just like we did, Mark, with the mixed-use town center portion of the land use plan, how that has like one or, one page in there with the highlights that would point back. I just raised that as a suggestion, as a possible middle ground to get this, so thank you again for the.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson, thank you for patience, I appreciate it. Okay, are we ready to go back to agenda item number eight? I believe we have the applicant here tonight. Agenda item number eight.
Yes, he's here.
Discussion on an amendment to the development concept plan for the commercial portion of Kingston Pike Village, Farragut Junction, TCD Plan Commercial Development Project at Southwest, at the Southwest intersection of Kingston Pike and South Watt Road. Daniel Smith, applicant.
We talked about this last month, we looked at two different.